Good evening. The budget gap before you, as the mayor indicated, has a small decrease in what we submitted, and that would be in the line item of general office supplies. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Counselor Lutz?
Yeah, can I have any more questions?
Yeah, I can look at it.
Sure.
Can you look at it?
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you.
Law of time.
Page 27.
Mr. President. Free amigos.
Try that.
Bueno, noches. That's Gary Runn, Mr. St. Um... The city of... No city or town is better represented lately than the city of London. It might not be unfortunate to have 118 hours, 118 years of municipal law. Last year we sued $71 million. We paid out $50,000. So, I'm proud of how it happened. Any questions on that again?
Hopefully a 30/50, huh?
Hopefully. Feel good tonight.
Any questions?
Can you look at it? Bro. Can you eat that? Bro.
No.
But it's here and we can do it without money.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Parking. Page 76.
Mr. Fenton is monitoring, as you all know, his stroke recovery for surgery. Any questions that may help?
Any questions? Counselor Tron.
Thank you. I'll ask my usual question again, Mary. How much money did your office bring in this year? What's your number?
I didn't really look into that, um, probably to date, um, now.
Thanks.
Counselor Nett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see that you're not the president for overtime, so we're not planning to stop. We're not, uh, for overtime this year.
No, not this year.
Okay, that's good. She'll say, um, you have enough done. Okay, that's great. Appreciate it. Thank you so much, Mary.
Counselor Cato.
Did you draw the short straw today? You have it before.
I should do.
My guess, but Mr. Perry, okay.
He's good, Kenfish.
Um... Any questions? Wow. That's right. Anyone's right.
Do you still want?
That's fine.
Clerk's office, Mr. Crone.
Page 10.
Any questions, Mr. Crone? Please.
How was your budget?
Okay.
Was that close to you all?
Any questions? Counselor Cato.
There are questions. Are there any people who like this money?
A couple.
A lot.
Do you guys? We gotta work with the head of electioneering since I don't have a reason now. Oh, we, uh, put it...
Any questions? All set?
Thanks.
Any additional questions?
When do we go back to wife's day, Mr. Crone?
Thank you, Mr. Crone. How about master?
Page 64.
The budget is 1, 2, 3, 4 items. It's time to change this several years. It's a lot of money on that. And can I be asked any questions you might have?
Any questions?
Uh, when did work be finished down there yet?
Well, as far as the wind is concerned, the blocks of old construction were waiting the installation of the electric service and the water service.
Okay.
I think another month we should be back. You're at 7:00.
Nice. Another question.
Counselor Cato.
Mr. Perry. How's the wave attenuator manner going? Have you been involved in... Have you started doing some preliminary research or R and D stuff or...
Actually, the flow step will be twice that for Marina. Have a wave attenuation characteristic, particularly the heavier, the deeper, um... Beyond engineering now, a series of wave fences to go around the form of a rear that should help it.
Okay, may I get one?
It's on the way. It'll be a while before it's put together. Good project.
Counselor Tron.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, do you see, Mr. Perry, uh, people coming back to Marina? Come back with their votes now that it's been improved?
Well, yes and no. We're not ready to go in November, December to rent something. We didn't know how it was going to be in that position. So, many people that had been in Marina's last year had to re-up at whatever facility they were staying here. And you have to do that when the assembly of the rent spot, so... I suspect that by the end of the season, we'll be up to 75%. And hopefully this year will sell the ways out. Historically, it's been sold well over here.
Yeah, essentially, it's oversold. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Mary.
I am here because Mike said National Bank. Ask away.
Any questions?
Do you have any question?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Can you look at it?
Yes. Thank you.
Counselor Tron. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to pass along, Mary, and also I'd like to pass along to Mike that, um, I get, you know, I have a lot of veterans in Shoredale who's doing our ride. And, um, I get a lot of calls, and of course, I'll be here saying, you know, what, you know, what a wonderful bunch of people are in our veterans' office and how much the guys do, so...
Thank you.
They take their time to call, so...
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to pass that on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Purchasing, Mr. White.
Page 19.
Gentlemen. My budget is basically as I presented it. It was a little, uh, just a change in reallocation to identify grease that I have or coffee sheets. But basically, that's just it. It's every other raise to a contractor. Will be a few adjustments in what was presented. It wasn't everything. But it's a $2,500 increase over the, uh, what you see because of a step change for one of my staff members. Again, the contractor.
Any other questions, first of all?
If you're good, if you're good, we'll go to the other side. Bye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karen.
Page 12.
Good evening. This budget is basically local funded, other than contractual raises this year. Uh, slight reduction in the expenses. Most of my expenses, well, two-thirds have been tied up on four big items that we really need to have done. Uh, so it's kind of hard to make any cuts in that line item. Uh, we have that with raises done on the utility companies. Uh, that's really resulted in a lot of additional value being necessary to utility companies, which has provided savings for every other taxpayer in the city by increasing the amount of taxes they pay. Uh, the other thing we do is we have to have personal property accounts. We listed it in the businesses open. We have the private outside professional mentor area. That's pretty much every city and town contracts. After that, it's just not cost effective to have someone with that expertise on staff. Uh, there is also mapping, which needs to be done every year as subdivisions occur in lots of combined or split up and things like that. And then we also... This budget will also update our photos of properties in the city. Our... Over half our pictures are over 10 years old, which are, you know, not going to be acceptable to Department of Revenue. We'll do a revaluation, uh, for FY15. So, we're going to try to get that. The good thing is that, uh, that, uh, project will also be a huge benefit to DPW and public safety people because, hey, you're familiar with Google Streetscape. It's basically head and shoulders above that and provide a lot of helpful information to not just the assessors, but to everyone in terms of having, you know, excellent pictures of all the properties, which will save a lot of time out there going out in field. People can actually, you know, go on the computer and have... Take a walk down the street to see if there's an issue, when there's an issue, is exactly what is... Exactly what's there. But other than that, that's it. Uh, just one other thing is that we will be going into a recertification cycle, which means that the state will be examining our procedures in FY15. Typically, we fund part of that cost in the previous year's budget, but I did speak to the finance director earlier, and we're rather than estimating, uh, what our costs are going to be, because usually we don't contract out on that until late spring, we thought it best to leave it out of the budget now, and we'll address it when we have a better idea what the exact cost is later in late winter or early spring, and get supplemental at that point in time, rather than, uh, you know, just plugging a number in if we have no idea what the final number is going to be.
Any other questions? Counselor Seid.
One has given back to the area with tax utilities.
Yeah.
The space available.
Yes.
Polls and so that.
What?
Some of the, uh, people that I'm talking to, those children, they're charging a couple of loans, and they're saying to us, save some towns from the tax. They're allowed to ask that.
That...
Spend some money.
Yeah. That's Verizon. And that's Verizon that's going there. And, uh, what they did is when the, uh, legislature changed the rules, legislature changed the law back for FY 2011 to make polls and wires, or actually 2010, to make polls and wires over public waste taxable. Up to that point, we had a situation where half the polls owned by Mass Electric were being taxed, and the other half of the polls owned by the phone company were not. Now, all the utility polls are being taxed the same way, and they sort of got their gander up over that, like somehow that, you know, they were no longer being special, so they started adding that little surcharge on to, you know, just the, you know, poke their fingers in the eyes of the government officials, I guess.
There are a lot of them.
I... Yeah, I assume so. I assume DPW a lot of those.
I hear that really that they're giving cost savings for the Verizon people that have... They have telephone and that.
Well...
And that's sort of pretty cool and all of one.
Well, you know, what they've basically done is simply... Is simply pulled out that part of their cost structure and just created a separate line item for it, you know, just... Just to, you know, make a point, I guess.
So, what happens is the refuse thing makes a lot of...
They have to ask the utility regulators about that, but I would assume so. I think they must have permission from telecommunications to do that.
Any other questions? How does the JAKR program, um, with the, uh, a lot of people to put it out to patients?
Uh, I spoke to the mayor's chief of staff the other day. They're finishing up the quarry, uh, reports right now on the people that apply. Once that's completed, then we will start hiring people, or start going across. Basically, we just want to finalize the rule of people we got this week.
Can you hire people or that?
I'm not sure. I couldn't give you the answer as to how many, you know... I don't know how many people have been eliminated or anything like that.
Counselor Tron. Thank you. Just to follow up on that, Mr. Karen. Now, so the people for the next fiscal year, they'll get the tax payment next year, or how is that?
Yeah, it's... The start of the fiscal year is not an issue. That money will come out next... Even if they work this year, that money will come out next year's budget. What's going to happen is we have to put, um, money into the overlay budget. The overlay budget is where money for tax abatements and exemptions come out. So, essentially, what would happen is the, uh, department debt will report to me how much money any individual is working that I'm referring up to the maximum amount, and then I will issue an abatement for that amount against the overlay. It'll show on their tax bills as a reduction of their taxes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Counselor Cato.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, what have you seen, Karen, about recent statistics? How are we doing in the city this year? Have you seen them going up or...
Yes, I think, uh, I was just talking to a couple of realtors yesterday on the phone, uh, and I've been going through the sales from July, last July to this June. Uh, I've worked through them. I will get every sale, you know, to look at the MLS listing and look at the aerial photographs, you know, so I review every sale. I would say single-family values bouncing back. You're seeing, especially as you come into the end of 2012, 2013. Uh, I know that, uh, bank or trader reporting that the prices are up about 6% in March from what they were the previous year. We're seeing much more than that in the multifamilies, keeping in mind that the multifamilies, and I'm talking two and three families. Uh, those properties took consecutive years of 25% reductions in value when the foreclosure crisis, RIT, is headed back in 2007, 2008. That has been reversed in recent years moderately, but it looks like we're looking at, I'm expecting to see double-digit percentage increases on two and three families over last year's values for the FY14 values. So, uh, the bubble may be, you know, coming up a little bit again, you know, but, no, keeping in mind that the average three family was in the high 400s at the height of the market, and it fell down to about $235,000. Uh, I expect that to be close to over 300, or close to 300 next year.
And how's our fund, I forget the name of it, but it's basically the abatement fund?
Oh, that's... Yeah. We have, you know, we have more than adequate money in there. You know, we have, uh, you know, we have to... We have to keep enough money to cover for exemptions, which is for the flying veteran, widows, and elderly get statutory exemptions. That comes out of that fund. Any abatements we grant come under that, uh, that fund, and then any abatements also come out of that fund. Uh, we've been showing surplus in recent years. You know, we haven't had to give out any big abatements in recent years. We have one, uh, GP case that we settled several years ago. That was the last one. Most of them are modestly sized properties that, you know, we're talking... We're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars in most cases, substantially less than that. Any other questions? Counselor Nett.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I know.
You mentioned, um, single families bouncing back a little bit, and we get more revenue come in. And how about business and excise taxes? So, how... How's it looking out there?
Well, the excise taxes should be going up. The automobile market, uh, industry has been very strong in the last few years. People are back buying new cars again, and that usually would... The result of that is that people replace old cars and pay a little amount of excise tax with new cars that pay a substantial amount more. So, we should see some improvement in our auto excise revenue. Business seems to be... It's... If you... Any kind of businessman talks to me, if things are horrible, things are terrible, and every time a piece of commercial property sells, it sells for more than the assessed value. So, it's hard to tell how bad things really are from my perspective, uh, which, you know, the value seem to be holding when we see property sell, so, uh, I say that statement of the market is relatively stable.
Okay. That's good. So, um, do you think in the long run you might be able to work out, if you can put some money aside to, uh, for new businesses to come to, then so they can utilize and incent them to do that?
Well, that... That would be, you know, a decision to be made by the community development, EDIC, and the mayor in terms of budgeting for those types of things. Uh, you know, we're obligated under the law, tax property has both fair cash value, so we can't provide any tax incentives would be through a TIF program, which would be as US elected officials would be the ones to decide whether or not to provide someone some tax break in order to provide that kind of incentive. That's not I drop. You're attributable to voters as to whether or not that's a good deal in order. That should be done, so the legislature has put that burden on elected official and on the assessors as appointed officials.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Thank you. DPW?
Page 69. 69.
69.
Mr. Counselor President, Counselors. I just want to let you know that in the next two weeks, I will be stepping down as the DPW commissioner. During the last year and a half, I've worked many endless hours, made a different issue. I tried to address every single issue with respect, and I hope that all the time that I expect my shoe, uh, I do my best. This is a nice city. We very dedicated people, and I have a lot of respect for you alls. Today, I'm bringing Lisa Merritt, and she's been working with the budget. So, any questions related to the budget, you can address it to Lisa. Thank you.
I'm going to miss you, Mary.
Counselor Lozey.
Mr. President, um, through you, I'd like to thank Manuel Valcintaro for his service to the city. Um, he's done a fine job. He was always reliable. Call him day or night, could get a hold of Manny. And if, uh, for any reason he was busy, he'd get back to you, and I appreciate everything you've done, Manny. You've done a fine job for the city of London. Thank you. I would like to ask, Lisa is answering the questions. As a ward counselor and talking with my colleagues, we're very concerned about, um, a loss of services, uh, whether it's sidewalk repair, potholes, tree trims, tree rules. I'm not criticizing the work that DPW is doing, but I... I'm very concerned that, as chairman of the Department of Public Works Committee, we've had several meetings, and I think we've communicated very clearly to the mayor that the DPW is understaffed, underfunded, and, uh... Can you just tell me a little bit about what we can expect in the coming year with DPW, both, um, uh, constituency services repaired, or potholes, sidewalks, trees? And then I'd also like to get into snowplow and separately, but if you could, Lisa, let me know.
Okay. Presently, right now, we have hired 12 seasonal employees that are right now working on the street department, cemetery, and the parks. Uh, they started on May 10th, and they'll continue until September. In April, um, we hired eight emergency personnel. They're also... They started in April, and they'll finish up in June. And they were working in the cemetery, the parks, and the street department.
How... Right now, currently, the DPW has how many tree crews working?
Tree crews? It depends on the day. People taking vacations, second or stolen days, um, get... We had a crew out this past week doing some repairs and branches, removal.
Are there times where you're not able to put out more, you know, sufficient crews?
Yes, because right now, in our department, we have 49 employees. Broken down, we have five in the garage, nine in the parks, cemetery, and 23 in the street department. And we have 12 in the administration staff. That's with the commissioners, social commissioners, street superintendent, assistant superintendent at the parks.
So, basically, compared to just three to five years ago, the DPW is much understaffed?
That's correct, because people have been retired.
Attrition and...
Yes.
And when was the last time you were in full-time permanent employees hired?
I believe last year, correctly.
And how many were hired? And how many were hired?
There was two.
I'll yield before my call.
Counselor Seer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I was kind of talking on the come here.
This is my first. Thank you.
When I'm trying to give you a library or council, I think everybody at the DPW does a lot of job. But there's a lot of council and our obligations, tree crews, sidewalks, sidewalks. I look at the numbers, I see a lot of ones and zeros, but, you know, guys have used more data than ever in place. There's a number of positions that, services, the city people down, I know we have education, budget here, leasing by the takes a lot of money, but no staff, Manny, Blair, and Monty, you know, two months ago, DPW committed. And at that point, the DPW was looking to buy more equipment, looking for money, air payment, etc. on that. Possibly hire a couple more people to put on, to take care of the current issue in the city and things like that. And I mean, and I'm also here around with a shortfall. Do you know anything about a shortfall that maybe else there? Do you see anything in the foreseeable future that, providing we have a break like we did two years ago, I don't use any of that small people. Do you see any of our equipment breaking down, more people retired, the need for more people? Now, as a member of all of the prime committee, you're going to come up in front of us and what we call, if you need, and ask. If I had to, you know, want to know what his projections were on there. You got a little bit, I'm not going to come up last year, so, because we're spickling and we stay on. So, you know, I think the DPW provides such a service to the city that we really need. If we need more money, the thousand times it helps. And for us to be able to say to the mayor because of all the issues that we have, you know, a lot of parks, I don't think there's enough people on the parks. I don't think there's enough people in the trees and Manny knows, I'm always on the phone and I have no problem chasing him down in his car. Like, so, he won't come across. So, I know my question.
So what's your question?
Question is foreseeable, shortfall, and, you know, you have to agree with us that you need more people. So you need to increase this budget. That's a promise.
We definitely need additional employees in our department.